And we're very grateful that enough residents and funders agreed with us that this was important. So let's get started. We'll have Lauren speak first about how to engage with council offices effectively from a council staffers perspective, and then we'll do Q and A. You can put your questions in the chat, and we'll read them out for you. So over to you, Lauren.
Hi, I'm Lauren. As Yowana said, I was Communications Director for Councilwoman Amy Murray. And before that, I was Community Outreach Director. So that means I got to deal with people in a bunch of different aspects at City Hall. Um, I think the main thing I want to get across, and when you're dealing with City Hall is Cincinnati is a small town. Nobody's perfect. Um, so just remember to have some compassion and be nice. Because if you tweet something horrible about somebody, you might have to sit next to them in a meeting, and it's going to be really awkward. So I think that is the number one thing to remember when you're dealing with City Hall. No matter, even if you're mad, just take a deep breath and don't send that angry tweet. Um, so I wanted to start with some do's and don'ts. So, um, one of the best things you can do, if you want to catch a council member's attention, is don't send it to council@cincinnati-oh.com. That is, it's a mass email. It goes out to everybody, and it can quickly get ignored or looked over, or, you know, one staff may assume that another staff is dealing with it. Every once in a while, I know, I would email Yowana and say, hey, have you dealt with this yet? And she'd say yes or no. But if you really want to get attention, send it individually. It takes five extra seconds. Um, and then if you're going to send them an invite, I would send them, um, you know, say, hey, Councilmember Murray, it was great seeing you at this event. I wanted to invite you to this event. It'll be good because X, Y, Z. Councilmembers get a lot, a lot of invitations, many. We used to do a stack up this big every Wednesday of invitations. So you want to make sure yours stands out, um, because they do want to come. A good council member wants to come to your events. They want to engage with the community. Um, so other tips, I would never text a council office or a council staffer. Um, text, I text, send, they can get lost sometimes, lost in the shuffle. Emails are usually the best way to go. That way, if I get an email saying, my trash didn't get picked up today, I could easily forward that over to Courtney Hauser. And then your problem's taken care of. Where if you text somebody or you call somebody, it just gets lost. It's harder to forward. So you're going to be most effective when you're emailing. Fair warning, though, emails are public records, so just be careful what you say. We always follow the rule of anything you say in an email can be on the front page of the Inquirer. So that's a good lesson to remember. Um, so an ineffective email might say, I am really angry that there's trash on 7175. I need you to get out there and clean that up. And that's ineffective because we don't have control over that. So that's technically ODOT. Um, which you probably don't know, but when the council staffer comes back and says, hey, that's actually ODOT. I'm going to connect you with this person. Take that as thank you. They're working on it. So many times, you know, we'll get an angry email about something that we have absolutely nothing to control. And that gets really difficult. We've talked about the trash many times. I promise you, I promise. Um, then also, if you ever call a council office, this is one of the main things I want you to remember. There are many interns in City Hall, and that person you might be calling might be a 20-year-old kid. This is their first job, their first intern experience. They're young, they're bright-eyed, they're excited. And if you call them cussing them out, it is going to really hurt. I've seen this happen so many times, interns just crying because they've been cussed out on the phone. That is never an effective way to interact with City Hall. You always want to be professional. You always want to be polite because you don't know who's on the other end of the line. Any of you have worked in customer service, no emotions can get high. But just try to remain calm and remember that person on the other end of the phone is actually a person. Um, so let's see, dropping by City Council, this is usually not a good idea to just like drop in and be like, hey. Um, it's very hectic right before council and right before committee meetings. Our offices are always clustered because there's by leave items and everything's coming in last minute, and maybe somebody's changing their vote on this. And this ordinance is coming in, but they have a B version, and we haven't seen the B version. And council starts in 30 seconds, and you have to know what's going on. So while we appreciate just the swing by and the hey, sometimes it's really hard because we're, our council member has to vote, and that's a priority. And it, it's not that we want to be rude. It's just that we're trying to do our job. So it's always a good bet to just like send an email, say, hey, I'm going to be down at City Hall today at 1:15. If public comment's over, can I stop by and say hi? And they'll say yes or no, and that's always a much better bet. Um, because it makes us feel bad if we're like, it's so great to see you, but we're trying to do this thing, and please don't think we're rude. Um, I can tell you, a lot of staffers worry about being like rude. Like, we want to always put on a good front. We always want to be polite to you. Um, we don't want to get our bosses in trouble. So help your staffers out a little bit and just send them an email before you just pop up. Um, it's, um, so if you're going to come to a meeting, so you've, you've scheduled, you've sent an email. You said, I want a meeting. This is what I want to meet about. And the staffer says, okay, let's schedule a meeting. And the meeting's scheduled. They'll usually give you, I would always give people like a list of times, pick from these times. Um, council members have to have a lot of information. I mean, the amount of information we absorb, I have a degree in music, and I had to understand how a streetcar air compressor work. I don't, you know, these are not, we're not experts in these fields. So when you come in, you need to be the expert, and it helps to bring a one pager saying X, Y, and Z. Um, I know a lot of times we would lobby on behalf of the health disparities with African-American mothers. So we would come in with a page, a one pager, and say, African-American mothers are more likely to lose their child than white mothers. This is why here's the information backing this up, and it's all on one page. So then if it comes up in council and there's a question, that council member's going to have your information right in front of them. And they can say, actually, in my meeting with Cradle Cincinnati, they said this was the issue. It's right here. These are the stats. Um, that makes it a lot easier for the council member to advocate for you because you're going to want them on your side. And also, it's always a good idea to build relationships with council members. You could go to coffee. If you're an expert in the field of, let's take the opioid epidemic. You know, Talbert House is brilliant when it comes to the opioid epidemic, and you're going to know a lot more than I will ever know. Um, but I've trusted them. You know, we've built a relationship with Talbert House over the past five years, where if I call them and say, hey, what's the real story? What are the real numbers? They're going to say, this is a real story. These are the real numbers. This is what you need to know. And that's what I need to know, and I never have to question that. I have never questioned anything that's come from Talbert House because I trust them, and we have a good working relationship. So take your council member out to coffee. Well, don't pay for their coffee. Ask them if their coffee will heal. Um, and just kind of get to know them a little bit. If you're really, really passionate about something, you know, and be careful how you use your voice. I know Josh is going to be speaking next. Josh is really good about that. Um, Josh is laser focused on, you know, the homelessness issue. And whenever that popped up, we knew Josh was going to be there. So be careful how you use your voice. He's become an expert in the field, and everybody trusts him. He would be less trustworthy if he went off on various different tangents, but he never does that. He always stays focused, and that really helps. You know, social media is something we all see. Unfortunately, unfortunately, anything you tweet is going to be seen by a staffer or the council member themselves. So if you're tweeting that so-and-so doesn't do enough for transportation, and then you go to a meeting and say, hey, I want you to do more for transportation, and you say, okay, we'll do this. And then two days later, you're tweeting again. They still don't do anything for transportation. That's going to get really frustrating for the council member because they're trying to help you. Um, and don't be the person who gets mad over every little thing. There, there are a lot of things to get mad about. I completely understand that. Um, but if you use your voice sparingly, here's an example. I don't tweet much. But when a council member voted against declaring racism a public health crisis, I said something. I said, this is unacceptable. That council member should have voted yes because it is a public health crisis. And that was so much more powerful because I don't constantly tweet horrible things about people. So just be careful how you use that. Um, and then really finally, and then I'll get to questions. There's always a rumor of drama around City Hall. You could spend your whole time wrapped up in so-and-so's getting investigated, so-and-so sending me a text message. That's not the stuff that's going to matter. In five years, what's going to matter is, hey, we started this program called um, Safe Places Cincy. So people who are addicted to drugs can immediately get help. What is the word? Oh, treatment, addiction treatment services. That's what's going to matter. So maybe two years from now, there's somebody who's not using drugs anymore because of that program. Chris Sealbuck said something mean about Amy in a text message, but you know what? In five years, that's not going to matter. What's going to matter is the group prenatal care we set up at Northside Health Clinic to help African-American moms. So it's really easy to get swept up in the drama. Um, just try to stay focused on what your mission is, what you're really passionate about, what you want to get across. So I guess I'll take questions now.
Thanks, Lauren. We have one question in the chat about casework. So it was, do people actually email small requests like my trash didn't get picked up to council members? That's from Robert Rice. And Hilly already, I mean, Hilly answered and said, yes, people do email about things like that. But I wondered if you could talk a little bit more about like council staff's role in dealing with those basic casework requests.
Yeah, so I will tell you, um, my absolute favorite email, we get emails that are crazy. Um, hello, I'm writing to let you know I'm disappointed with your stance on pet squirrels. I have come to discover that my want and need for squirrel companionship is not legal. And this went on and on about why this man wanted that squirrel. Um, so yes, council gives emails about all sorts of things. You're allowed to send your council member, hey, my trash didn't get picked up. Can you come pick it up? Or hey, there's this trash can on the side of the road that gets stolen all the time. Can you fit us a new trash can? Hey, the snow truck didn't come. You know, nothing is to, we're there to help you. Um, and I can't tell you how many times staff has worked together. You know, Kathy Don over in, who used to be a colleague of Yowana and Hilly. You know, she was amazing at responding to all those little things. And normally, by the time I said, is anybody working on this? Kathy already had it done. Um, so yes, use this fix-it since the app. It's amazing. And never think that a problem's too small for a council member.
Okay. If anyone else has questions for Lauren, just throw them in the chat. And in the meantime, Lauren, I was going to ask you to talk about how, how has someone who approached your council office been helpful to you even when they didn't agree with you? So if I disagree with a policy that your boss proposing, I know that you guys are good public servants and you would meet with me anyway. How can people like that be effective and helpful?
That is a really good question. Um, so Ellen, it's Ellen Vera, right? She does the
Co-op Cincy.
Yeah, so we're not, we're Republicans. We're not co-op people. Um, honestly, David Miller and I didn't fully understand what a co-op was. And then Ellen Vera came in and she said, this is what we're doing. This is what's important to us. Here are the, here's this information. I mean, she basically taught us co-op 101. So we didn't agree with her going into it, but we learned so much. Um, and I think as long as you just go in, they're there to learn from you. So just go in nicely. Don't be nervous. Approach them like, hey, we're friends. We're going to learn this new thing. It's going to help you in the long run. So yeah, she did really great. She should give a class about teaching co-op stuff.
I agree. She's also in our first cohort of City Council School, and we love her. So Katie Vogel has a question in the chat. Lauren, what's, what's the most effective citizen advocacy you've experienced in your time as a staffer?
It's a really good one. So I will say, um, when the defund the police movement came out, that caught our attention because we were getting, I think I responded to 2,000 emails. Uh, but so many of them were the blank emails, like the blank copy and paste, or they sign their name on a website. So those are very rare do they catch our attention. Very rarely do 2,000 of those ever actually come in. I think 100 is maybe the most we've ever gotten on one's, one topic. Um, I think what really caught our eye was, um, the T21, so banning smoking until you're 21 instead of 18. Um, you know, that's not something that typically a Republican would stand behind. But we dug into the research, and we had so many people from Interact for Health coming and saying, listen, if we stop kids from smoking until they turn 21, it's less likely that they're going to get addicted. And these long-term health issues aren't going to happen. Or, hey, you're going to reduce the number of infant mortality because you're going to have less moms smoking. So we ended up voting, Amy was sick that day. We would have voted in support of T21. And I thought the way they kind of culled less, and they all kind of came together for that was really, really effective.
Anyone else have questions about how to talk to a city council office for Lauren? Hey, Lauren, do you want to talk about how an effective way that people or groups of people talk to a city council office when it comes to the city's budget?
Um, budget time is crazy. Yowana knows that. Um, if you want something in the budget, I mean, Josh, Josh is a pro at the budget and knowing what to ask for. Um, just tailor your ass. Don't walk in and say, I need $5,000. Give me $5,000. Um, Morta would come in and say, hey, we needed $35,000 to do this program, and we found them $35,000. Um, and don't come in angry. Like I've said before, coming in demanding money is never going to work. Be proactive and saying, hey, these are what, this is what the money can go for. This is what we're wanting to do with it. This is why we need this. This is who we will help. Um, that's always the best way to do council budget asks. Bring your data.
Thanks. Emily Stove has a question. How do council members prioritize their time in meeting with community members? Is it really as easy as just asking? I can't imagine they have unlimited time.
It is as easy as just asking. Um, is that saying you never know until you ask? So if maybe a council member can't meet with you, the staff will always meet with you. I can think of very few meetings where Amy didn't come. Um, you know, it is a part-time job, but if you catch them on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, no, Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, they usually have committees. They're usually there all day. You know, they should be able to squeeze in a half an hour meeting with you. If you, I mean, they should be able to do it. If they're not doing it, then that's, that's not really acceptable. They have time. They can make time.
Another point, just to add to that, is that not as many people ask as you would think. I mean, I was there when we were getting those thousands of emails during the Black Lives Matter protests too. And something that jumped out to me was none, not one single person of those thousands of emails asked to meet with an elected official. That was shocking to me.
That is very true.
Yeah, asking and forming the relationships are so important. Um, so here's another question. What about sending a simple thank you card? Is mail appropriate to send?
Yes, we love thank you cards. I actually hung up all the thank you cards we ever got. Um, and then on Christmas, during the holidays, offices will tape holiday cards they get. So if you send your Christmas card to a council member, it'll likely get taped up on their door. It's a fun little thing. So we love getting mail. I love to get email. We all love to get email. Thank you cards are always a good option.
Um, Jane Sights asks, can community council presidents have more support? Or could there be council member, could there be council members assigned to community outreach?
To the community, community council presidents, yes, they could have more support. Um, Amy bid her 5252, where we went to all 52 council, community councils. Um, I think sometimes community council presidents are also afraid to ask, you know? You guys have a lot more power than you realize that you have, and all you have to do is ask. So sometimes we might not know that you're having an issue, and if you, you need help, then just let us know. Um, there could be council members assigned to community councils. But I would like to think that every council member is being held accountable by community councils. I mean, if it's 2021 and COVID is over, and you don't have a council member showing up to your community council meeting, then there's a bigger issue there. Um, so like I said, I think people underestimate how easy it is just to ask and just make that ask, and council should help.
Thanks. We have two more questions. So from Sarah Henry, what advice do you have for regular citizens wanting to make impactful change on a complicated issue? Change doesn't happen overnight. How many different council offices should one approach, and how frequently?
Yeah, so I think you need to know your issue. Um, if you were interested in affordable housing, you should really get to know Greg Lansman. I mean, that man knows more about affordable housing than I ever will. Um, if you are really interested in shootings in the police department, then you should probably get to know Christopher Smithman because he's the head of law and public safety. Um, so you need to know, kind of see who your council members are. If you're really concerned about an LGBTQ issue, Chris Sealbuck is going to champion you. Um, so I think it's really important to know who to ask. So just get coffee with them and say, hey, this is what I'm interested in. It's a really complicated issue. They've probably heard at least a little bit about it, and most of them want to learn more so they can better understand things. Like I said, we're not experts. If you're the expert, we want to listen to you and learn from you. So the best way to do it is just to know them, know what they're passionate about, target the right person. Um, and then just get to know them and keep up the relationship. Um, I can't tell you how many times, you know, somebody would send, hey, I saw this news article about the streetcar, something to think about. And it's like, oh, I will read this. Thank you very much. You know, little things like that go a long way.
Um, so I saw another question from Katie Vogel, and let's make this the last one. If activists were planning to advocate for a reduction in the police budget again, what would be the best way to apply the tools you're talking about to a strategy to be more persuasive?
Oh, man, Katie, you hit my sweet spot. So, um, yes, I'm a Republican, not a, not a secret. I worked for Amy Murray. Um, the best way to do that is to fully understand what you're asking for. Read the collaborative agreement. I can't tell you how many of those 2,000 emails we got that were from federal level. Somebody had blanket emailed them, and I could walk down and say, I sent an email saying, we're already doing this. We're already doing this. We're already doing this. Read the collaborative agreement here. So if you want to advocate for a reduction in the police budget, be specific. Say, you know what? Police spend way too much overtime money. We, we give them so much money in overtime. We need to reduce their overtime costs. That's a cut we would like to see. Or, you know, can some of these funds be reallocated to human services? Because, you know, when there's a domestic violence, we need the police there, but we also want a counselor there. And can we try to create that program? So don't go in and just say, defund the police, because nobody's really going to understand that. Nobody have a specific ask. I can't tell you how many people came to us saying, defund the police. And we'd say, what do you mean? What do you actually want? And they couldn't tell us. There was a really good opportunity this year that I think we all missed to really look at the police budget and hold them accountable. I think every single department in the city should be accountable for every dollar they spend of taxpayer money.
You guys, I hope you're listening closely to this. This is a Republican telling you how to reduce the police budget. Seriously, she's saying, reduce police overtime because that's where, that's where we spend too much money. And Republicans like to be fiscally conservative, right? The other trick that I would just add is that the, um, the police, uh, union agreement expires in May of 2021, right? So, so lobbying now and early in 2021 with specific changes that you want to see to the existing police union agreement would be much more incisive, effective, specific way to ask to reallocate police dollars, right? And maybe you focus on those overtime dollars. And maybe you say, we want to redirect them to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, just for example. That's a thing you could do.
There's a really good opportunity right now to look at our police department and make it better for everyone, but you got to find the right wording.
Yeah. Okay, Lauren, I know you have to go soon. Um, so thank you so much for spending half an hour talking to us about how to engage city council offices. We really appreciate it, especially because you jumped in at the last minute. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for doing this. This is great. And I'm glad you guys are all engaged. So thank you.
Of course. All right. Um, next, we're going to hear from Josh, Josh Spring, the Executive Director of the Greater Cincinnati Homeless Coalition. Josh has an incredible amount of experience engaging our local elected leaders and an unparalleled track record of success of getting what he asked for. He's going to share his philosophy, tips, and tricks of engaging council from the outside. We're going to talk to him for about 20 minutes, and then we'll do Q and A again. Um, and then after him, we will have a workshop. I'm giving a two-minute speech with Darnell Pierre Benjamin. Okay, Josh, over to you.
Thank you for having me and for listening to what I have to say. I think the first thing that is really important, uh, and, and Lauren mentioned this actually, is sometimes we have this idea that we have to be somebody special or somebody of a certain notoriety to access City Hall or to meet with a council person or to address a committee of council. And the fact is that you're special enough already. So, uh, we all should be engaging. The second thing is City Hall and City Council sometimes gets kind of, has this mystical has this mystical aspect to it, like what, what goes on there? How does it work? You know, am I, when I go into council chambers, you know, it's like, you know, I'm going into some sacred place and I've got to hold myself a certain way. And the truth is that that's our building. We own that building as the citizens of this city, the residents of this city. And so we should go in acting like we own it. Acting like we're in our house and we're attempting to affect how things happen in our house. And I'll say that if you're working to accomplish a change in our city through, through City Council and through City Council members, it is important to, to do your best to understand how things work inside the city, even the knit and grit of how the processes work. And, and I preface all of this by saying, I don't, I don't mean to indicate that, you know, unless you've done some certain amount of preparation, you shouldn't go to City Hall, you shouldn't speak. I, I think you should speak, even if you don't feel prepared. I think you should go and, and, and be there. But the, so for example, in terms of being prepared, most often, I think good engagement with City Hall that is, ends up being successful doesn't start by going in the first time and starting what you're working on in a, in a city council meeting. That's not typically where things start. So we have just talked about the visiting city council people, talking with city council people. But even after you've done that, really you want to start with committee, with a committee. There, the way things work is that items move in first after, after just being noted on council agenda, move into committee. And that's where the work is supposed to be done. And so you want to stay in touch with those meetings. You want to stay in touch with what council members are, are on those committees. Who is chairing, who is vice chairing those committees? And if you're working on a particular effort, get clear in your head or the heads of folks that you're working with. What is it exactly that you're trying to accomplish? What is the exact goal? Not what, not what might be nice or what might work, but what is it that you are trying to get done? And then, once you've done that, you can work to line up. What are, what do I need to accomplish that goal? So obviously, at the end of it, you're going to need five votes. You might need six votes if you want to avoid a veto from the mayor. So you need five to six votes. Great. Who is most likely to vote with you? Who are you unsure about? Who do you know will be against you? And, and then what do you have to do to secure those votes? And that means getting to know the, as best you can, the ins and outs of each individual council member. But also, it is very important, I believe, to not only focus on the council members, but to get to know the staff in the council offices. Because council members are not hanging out all day, working their nine to five at City Hall. That, that's not what happens. Staff are the ones doing the work. They're the ones, for the most part, drafting the motions and ordinances. They're the ones communicating with the various departments in the city. And so you want to get to know the staff and, and in order to be able to work with them. And, and identify if you're looking for, maybe you want something new to be introduced to council. You want to try to identify, well, who, who amongst council is more likely to be willing to bring forth this motion? Who's willing to do that? And you even want to think a bit beyond it of, who do I want to go to first? So you might, you might know, well, I, I need councilperson A to support this, but councilperson A isn't going to get on board unless they know councilperson B is on board. So I'm going to go to councilperson B first. Or you might know that a particular council person, you know, has a good relationship with the mayor or with another member of council or a few members of council. And so if you get them, it's going to be easier to get the next group of people. It's also important, whether you're meeting with council members or you're speaking in council chambers, to realize that council members don't know everything you're talking about. And the only way that they're gonna know what you're talking about is if you tell them. And that includes even the workings, the insular workings there. So council members may ask you, well, who else on council is supporting this? Or they may not ask you, but you, you should know and you should tell them. Well, you know, I've already met with this person and, and they're on board. And so that, that will help you. The other is try to facilitate conversations between council offices. Again, don't assume that they're all communicating on exactly what it is that you're fighting for. They may not be. And so you want to try to facilitate those, those conversations. And then in, in council chambers during a, during a meeting. Well, I guess I'll say, let's go back a little bit. When you come in there or meeting with anybody, you do want to be prepared. If you can gather together documents and information to provide to council members beforehand. If you can print out paperwork that explains what you're looking for and ask a councilperson or a staff person or the clerk of council to share that, to put a copy in front of each person's seat there in chambers, that, that can be effective. And you, when you're in chambers, I think it can, it can seem like, you know, my, my role is to come in here. I've signed up to speak. I get up, I say my two minutes, I do the best job I can at it. And then I watch what happens. And really, we all should be very active participants in what's happening in that room. So from my perspective, the signing up and speaking the two minutes is only a small part of what happens in that room. And there's a lot to pay attention to. Things like the agendas and the agendas that get published may be the agenda that's in a meeting or they may add a supplement to that agenda. They may add a supplement to the supplement that comes in in the middle of the meeting. And so paying attention for those items to come in. If there's an item that you want to know what's happening, but it's been put on the supplement to the supplement and, and you haven't received that yet, walk over to the clerk's office and ask for them to print you a copy of it. Because even times, there might be something that, that you're supportive of or not. But if you haven't read it, maybe there's a tweak of a couple of words that could really change the end result. And, and you're not going to know that unless you go and you get the document. And the other is during the meeting, pay attention. I think it's important to pay attention to what council members are doing, what their staff are doing. Body language is important, not only yours, but theirs. What are they communicating by their body language? How are they communicating with each other? If there's a recess, who do they immediately get up and go to talk, talk with? And why are they talking with that particular person? If, one of the things that, that we don't get after we speak our two minutes, if a councilperson or staff person, administration, whatever, says something that we know is incorrect, you don't get another two minutes of rebuttal, right? And so in that moment, I believe if you're able texting a councilperson and saying, hey, that, that, that was just said is, is not correct. Here's the actual information. Or walking over to the, the side of the half moon there that council members sit around and attempting to get the attention of a councilperson or a staff person to share this information with them. If you can't do that, leave council chambers and, and go to one of their offices and talk with a staff person to say, hey, here, you need to know this. The councilperson needs to know this. And it is, when you're up there doing, doing your two-minute talk, I believe it's important to, one, know that, know that, that you're supposed to be there. You've, you've not been, you've not been invited or given the opportunity to be there. You're supposed to be there. And, and to come into it, prepare, you know, two or three things that you want to make sure that you say. You don't need to say everything. You won't be able to in two minutes to say everything. And if you're with a group of people and you miss something, then somebody speaking behind you can, can fill in the blank or you can fill in the blank for them. And in the two minutes, I, I think it's important to mix fact and emotion. You don't want, I think sometimes folks get nervous and feel like they've got to kind of include every little minute detail of what they're saying. And, and those details might be important. But if you do that, you reach the end of your two minutes and you didn't get through, you know, even most of the points that you were hoping to get through. And, and I would also, I'd advise, if you are there with a group, maybe you've been to City Hall a few times, make an effort to go around and talk during the meeting. Talk a little bit with the folks who are there with you in your group to share more information about what is happening, what is occurring, why is it occurring? There's, there, I've been in meeting, city council meetings with a lot of folks and it's the first time they've been there. And at the end, or sometime in the middle, people lean over and say, what the hell is happening? What is going on? You know, why are they voting on this one thing three times? What does it mean to suspend the rules? Where, where, you know, all of this stuff, what, what is it? And so talking that through and just paying attention to it yourself. You know, the goal is to be the expert in the room about whatever it is that, that you are pushing for. And I would say to that end, you know, if, if, if you get asked questions by council members or the like, I think it's important to always have an answer. Even if you don't a hundred percent know the ins and outs of all of it, have an answer. And, and then I'll finish by, by saying, you know, all of the prep I talked about, kind of knowing who to work with on council and who to communicate with and when to communicate and all of that really means that ideally, ideally, by the time you walk into chambers, ideally, you've got a pretty good idea of where, of where the vote is going to stand. You may not know exactly if you're going to win or lose, but you've done the best you can to know who is going to be with you, who is not going to be with you. And if there's folks in the middle, you know who they are. You don't, you don't, it's not ideal that it walks, that you walk in and it's just a complete surprise. There's a whole lot of prep you can do beforehand. So with that, I, I'd love to try to answer anybody's questions or anybody's thoughts.
Okay, do you guys have questions for Josh about how to engage with council offices or in a council meeting as a professional advocate or a volunteer advocate? Josh, could you tell us about, could you tell us about, for instance, times when you were representing groups of residents who are at risk of losing their housing? And how you worked with council to, to help them stay where they were?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. So we do a whole lot of organizing, community organizing with folks who are fighting to save their homes from, from mass closure or displacement. And in any, in any organizing, it is, it is the most important thing that the, that the people who are facing the problem, who are personally facing the problem are the, are in leadership. And we always work to, before we're going to go into council to address an issue like that, let's have, set up meetings beforehand with the council members, with the group of people that you're working with, in this case, tenants fighting displacement, so that individuals can share their experience and solicit support from council members so that when you walk into the meeting, you know what you've got coming in front of you and you know, you know, you, what you're supporting in that day. And, you know, it's, it's really, it's important as much as possible that folks experiencing the direct problem are there and are speaking about it.
Great. And then I saw a question in the chat. What's your most inspiring moment and also the most discouraging moment you've experienced while at a council meeting?
Well, I don't know if I can name the most because there, there have been a lot on both sides. I, I think, well, one, one inspiring moment, or a couple inspiring moments, was when we, when we were organizing with folks in a series of properties and including the Alms Apartments, collectively nearly nine hundred units of affordable housing that was at imminent danger of closure. And the city, the city had sued the landlord for just terrible conditions. More, more pointedly, had sued the landlord using public nuisance law, which Public nuisance law, which says, you know, we've had too many police fire, etc., runs to this building. It's a public nuisance. And historically, that law has not served us well because it's been used to. To place the blame on people with with lower incomes. Experiencing the problem. But in this, in this. Example. You know, we had already organized with the tenants and we're actively talking with council members and actively in council chambers. Such that. Count the city as a whole. Really wouldn't be able to view people as the problem because. Folks were clearly. Partners in this and and we were able to get full support from city council. To support tenants. And, you know, I don't think that it happened before. That was very significant. And then. Discouraging. It's hard to put the. I just tell one thing. I don't know if it's the most. But. Quite a number of years back. During budget time when budgets were still being done. At the holiday season and the winter. We were in a meeting, I think, till. Midnight or something. And there was some money that we needed. It was coming from the federal government. All the council had to do was was vote to accept it. And I think it was to fund affordable housing. And the room was like a circus and I remember two council members. Haggling with each other that that they were with other council members and they would only vote for it. If these, if other council members supported some motion, they had to increase the funds for. Like ankle bracelets, like police watch bracelets, you know, and that was. You know, they were willing to. Put all of this housing on the line just for these ankle bracelets.
So from Tanuja Singh, she says, if a council member says something in a counselor committee meeting that you don't agree with. Or feels outrageous, how and when can you address it? Is there like an open agenda time that you have? To wait for to bring it up or do they allow comments or questions from the audience as they arrive?
Okay, yeah, yeah. So before a council meeting or committee meeting, there is time for public comment. So, you know, if you know going into it that there's an issue, you can certainly speak then. And if if this error occurs after public comment. I think the best thing that you can do is. Get the attention of a councilperson or their staff person that could be through walking to one of the offices. Going to the side there and and getting the attention of somebody or or sending a text message if you're able. To share that information. Doing that during the meeting in the in the moment. I think is certainly the most effective. And if somehow. You know, hopefully this error is coming up in a committee meeting. Hopefully you're in a committee meeting. And if you didn't get somebody's attention, you've got a little bit of time then before it hits the council meeting where you can go and address it between meetings.
Great. Matt Young asks, what is your definition of affordable housing? I hear the terms a lot and was wondering if there was anything objective we could reference. In future conversations with peers. And then after this, there's this one more question from Mike. And then we're going to move on to Darnell.
Right. Yes, so the the definition is it's not my definition. The definition of affordable housing is that. A household is paying no more than thirty percent of their monthly income for housing. Whether that's rent or mortgage and utilities, that that is the accepted definition across this country.
Perfect. And then Mike's question, do you spend more time going to committee meetings than actually in council meetings? Aren't most issues already decided in committee?
Yeah, probably do. There's obviously more committee meetings than there are council meetings, so. And I I would say that. By the time something reaches council, a lot of the time, it's it has already. Been decided. It was decided in in committee. You know, that's not always the case. Depends on the size of the committee and who's on it and all, but. You certainly want to hit something ideally before it gets to city council meetings.
Perfect. Okay, thank you, Josh. Spending an hour with us on a Thursday night. We appreciate it. Do you want to put your, do you want to put your like email address in the chat so people can reach out if they have a question? Cool. And while he's doing that, I will introduce our last speaker. Darnell Pierre Benjamin, he's an artist and educator who is going to lead us through an exercise without giving effective two-minute speeches. And I should have said this at the top, but Action Tank always partners with artists to design and deliver our content. We think that it makes it more engaging. It's a little bit more fun. And it's usually in the second half of our classes so that we can wake you up and get you involved. And so. I'm going to turn it over to Darnell now.
Hello, hello, hello. My name is Darnell Pierre Benjamin and before I even go into a full sort of spiel on me. What I like to do is do exercises and I like to physically engage people to get us all on the same page and connected. So if you can, regardless of whether your. Your video is on or not, if you can stand, please. And this also works if you're seated, so don't stress about that, but I would love for you to stand. If you can. Okay, great, great. So over the course of the pandemic, the thing that's really been kind of catching my eye is. The ways people found to connect and to get on the same wavelength and to ultimately. Sort of have an experience of community in a time when we don't get much of that. So one of my favorite things that people have been doing is the the screams. On a certain day, at a certain time, people just go outside and scream. And I think about the cathartic quality of screaming. And so what I want us to play with is. I want you to explore what it is to physically scream with your body, not with sound, only with your body. And I don't want you to overthink it. I want you to trust your instincts and whatever is that cathartic scream feeling that you viscerally connecting your body. Let that come on. I'm going to give you a count of three. I'm going to go one, two, three and go on the go-go. Great. One, two, three, go. Okay, great. I hope that felt as good for you as it did for me. Now, I want to do next, I want you to, if you can, stay standing. And what we're going to do is I'm going to count to four, three different times, right? And the first time, I want you to take a deep breath in for four counts. I want you to hold it for four counts and I want you to release it for four counts. I read, this is from auditioning by Joanna Merlin. And the whole concept is about auditioning for actors. But I find that speaking in front of a group of people, whether you're a performer or not, across the board, you're dealing with all of the. Baggage you're holding on, right? And so the idea of this is to balance you. So. Again, I'm going to use my hands and my fingers to count to four, three separate times. First time in. Second time, hold. Last time out. And. All right, good. Join me. Let's sit, let's chat. Okay, so again, my name is Darnell. I a little bit about myself. I started out as a dancer. And dance got me into musical theater. Musical theater got me into Shakespeare. Shakespeare got me into lyrical texts across the board. I really loved Greek theater at that time as well. And then I got into a lot of weird theater and now I kind of try to juggle it all. I work primarily as a performer. And as a director and choreographer and I also cheat teach. I'm over at CCM and NKU this semester. And pretty much I have always been of the belief that I just kind of take all the things that I like, put them into a bag and that's my career. So that's kind of how I operate. So why I'm here today, I'm here today to talk to you a little bit about your two-minute speeches and what it's like to be up there. At city council and how to best put a get, put together a package that's going to sell and help you achieve the objective you want. And on that topic, I'm going to bring up some acting terms, but a lot of these things relate completely to what it is to be up there and to deliver these speeches. So first thing I want to talk about before anything else, I always think it's important to make sure that you can identify what is your obstacle. That's number one. And I'm curious, when I say the word obstacle. Please feel free to share in the chat what obstacle means to you. When I say obstacle. And as you're typing, one thing I do want to immediately say is make sure that you're not worried about what you think is the right definition. Tell me your definition of objective. Obstacle, sorry. Something to overcome, yes. My stutter when nervous. Obstacle is something that's in my way, but that I can climb over or around, dig into, pick up, throw across Ohio, yes. Someone hindering what you want to accomplish. Single, uh huh, all these are fantastic. These are all great. Something for enemy from doing what I want, need or have to. Okay, great. This is all fantastic. Yes. So you all have a pretty clear idea of what an obstacle is. And that's across the board, regardless of if it's a performative turn or if it's something that's just everyday language, right? Now, when thinking about that, I always tell people really sit in the core of what your obstacle is. Really identify it as clearly as possible. For example, if you were a person going to city council, anybody has an example of an obstacle that might inspire that person to even go? Any obstacle, particular obstacle that would make a person decide, I'm going to go to city council and talk about something. Okay, need for public, for better public transportation, yes, please. What else? Anybody else? More affordable housing, yes, yes, yes. The list can go on, as a matter of fact. Whatever that may be, strategies to end gun violence, policing reform, okay, yes, yes. As we could really go on and on and on and on about this food access, yes, access to fresh fruit, veggies, healthy options, safety measures. Speed bumps in high traffic areas, all of these things. Now, okay, great. So and I noticed a lot of people, how you expressed your obstacle, you connected it to. Objective, I noticed. Now, what about if I say the word objective? What is an objective? Wanting to own a pet squirrel. What do you mean by that, Jack? Go, okay, what you want to accomplish.
Earlier today, that it is illegal. Cincinnati. And I I don't think it was possible, but learning now that it can't happen, I'm very disappointed.
You know, so maybe that could easily be an objective. Absolutely. I love hearing the context of that. Get a traffic light, uh huh. So great. So, okay, great, great. So now examples, what about some examples? Keep going with those examples to fund an initiative or project. So I, uh huh, fund an initiative or project. Get a traffic light on a busy street corner. What else? So owning a pet squirrel. What else you guys got for objectives? Street calming. Jack, I am so interested in the way your brain works. I love it. Street calming, uh huh. More protected bike lanes, uh huh. Cash bail reform, uh huh. Yes, these are all fantastic things. Provide more affordable housing. So what I want you all to notice here is with every single one of these objectives, a verb was always connected. Yeah, because at the end of the day, achieving an objective is all about action. It's what you're doing, right? Actively doing. Now, whenever we're looking at this whole idea of objectives, within objectives come all of these tactics. So for example, if I were to pull out. Let's say, okay, here's this one, to provide more affordable housing. Looking at that one, what are the different tactics a person could do to make that happen? Especially if you're trying to get people to make that happen. What are the different things a person can do? Find funding, uh huh, yeah, that's always number one. What else? Educate others on the current problem, show the ill effects of homelessness, uh huh. Mandate new developments, have some percentage set aside for affordable housing, all these things, exactly. These are all tactical things. Speaker with developers, speaking with developers to encourage them to incorporate developments that are mixed income. Landlord agreements, supplements, pay people a living wage. Bring Josh Spring, hey, locate well researched, nonpartisan data to back you up. All these fantastic things. This is great. This is great. Exactly. These are all the different things. Now, if you notice, again, all of these were actions. It was all verbs to do this, to do that. That's where we're going. That's that's a fantastic starting place, everybody. So now, when thinking about particularly the structure of these things. So I think about the many times I've listened in or attended city council meetings. And and the thing that always stands out to me is how. How people get up there ultimately and choose to express themselves, right? Everybody has a different operating system, but one of the things that I have found is. It's very easy for us to go in with our emotions and just pure emotions. But if there's anything I've noticed is that pure emotions don't usually get the job done. You need a little more than that. You need, for example, statistics sometimes, sometimes a story to share, something personal, something that's not. That that actually is why you chose to come. Granted, you can speak for the larger people, absolutely, because nobody goes in alone. We all are coming in with the baggage. That we're carrying with everyone else, but you have your perspective, so make your perspective clear. So now when you're looking at the structure, I always say very simply have a beginning, middle and end. A lot of times people kind of go in and they just rant and while rants are equally valid. It's hard to find what the objective is in a rant, if that makes sense. Because when you're ranting, you're kind of, you're, it's spewing off the top of your head, the stream of consciousness. And so these starts are falling out. And its direction is not clear. So give yourself as much of a beginning, middle and end. Now, I will say this much, there are people who are of the belief that they like to write it all out, memorize it and go there. I think the challenge with that is what's going to be working against you is you're going to be stuck in a paper. While they're over there, you could be looking directly in their faces and their eyes, having an actual connection and that paper gets in the way of that. So instead, I say, give yourself talking points. If you want to give yourself three points, you want to make sure you hit, just to give yourself a guide. So a beginning, middle and end, and I usually do it more in an outline format, just pop, pop, pop. And yes, you use TIAF funding for city backed equity. Reducer, shixxun sun fix, look at that, y'all are still going at it. I love it. So. So, okay, so you have your beginning, middle and end. And now the other thing, and this I think is actually. What I find to be the most important. It is very easy to be, you know, prepared, right? You can do the work, you can show up, you can know exactly what you want to talk about, you can connect with them and make sure that they can't. Ignore your existence, right? All these things can happen. But what I've noticed is, and that because I I've seen a lot of auditions, which I find very similar to these in a lot of ways. It is a person who has their two minutes to go up and say what they have to say, sell yourself, and then that's that's what it is. And an audition is the same thing. And what I find is that. You can know all your lines, you can know every single beat of every single moment. But if you don't believe in what you say truly. It goes over their heads, they lose it. So confidence is key. And when I say confidence, I'm not saying in some sense of. So confidence is key, and when I say confidence, I'm not saying in some sense of um, creating an affectation or some idea of pro- proclaiming or doing Shakespeare talk or something like that. I don't mean any of that. I mean, just genuinely going in there and knowing that what you have to say is worth hearing. And that you are validated in who you are and knowing that that is something they should listen to. Um, so know that, I guess what I'm getting at here is that when talking about objectives and obstacles and actions, what it all comes down to is at the end of it all, did you win or did you lose? You always have to have a winning part, point of view. You have to know that you came in prepared, you said what you had to say. And you've sown the seeds, the seeds are there and hope that the rest will build, right? So, just as a little recap, real quickly, I want you to all make sure that you remember, have, have a clear idea of what your obstacle is. That's number one. From having your obstacle very clear, make sure that then you have an objective attached to that. Make sure it's very clear in what you're saying, that you're delivering what you know you want, right? And then have actions, be ready to back those up with, for example, a story that you could share, a personal story. Or if you want to go in the direction of him and said, something that's a little maybe more aggressive. I say, hey, go for it, get the crowd to chant if you want. I'm, I'm of the belief that it is your two minutes. So do it with you will, as long as you're not doing anything illegal, right? Uh, identify your objective, yes, thank you. And then, oh, and the third one would be, really get a clear idea of what are the actions you're going to take to obtain your objective, to make it happen. And also, the last thing I would pin onto that is know that you've won when you've gotten off the stand, when you've gotten through with your turn, know that you've won. So now, with all that in mind, I am wondering if anyone would like to volunteer and share an idea on maybe an obstacle that they are um, considering sharing in a city council situation.
Someone wants to share, you can unmute yourself and just pipe up.
I hope y'all know, I'm one of those people that if uh, nobody volunteers, I'm gonna find somebody.
I'll totally call in someone too.
Hey, Margarita. Would you like to share?
Sorry, I step out because there is a, an ambulance in front of my house and I was wondering what was going on. So I hope it's all okay. Um, no, actually, uh, the question that I had that was be mostly for Joanna, since I'm sure that there are many issues uh, on the plate. Um, uh, which way uh, do we know what are the coming issue? The issue that are being discussed, uh, what are the groups that are pro-cons, uh, provide information, advise uh, for the specific issue so that we can, you know, be informed before acting?
Oh, so are you asking if um, like, if there's a place to get caught up on what's, what are the current issues?
No, of course, I know what are the current issue. I would know, um, which are the specific issue coming uh, to, to, to the end. And the, uh, the, the committee or in the councils? You know?
Oh, I wonder if it would help if you could sign up for um, to receive all the council and committee agendas um, when they come out. Uh, if that's something that, and, and so there's that, and I'll put that information in the chat. Um, and then you can also follow action tag. Um, we post the um, the council and committee schedules every day with links to the agendas and links to the live streams. Um, but I'm gonna answer that in the chat so that Darnell can um, can keep running his workshop.
Perfect, thank you. So Margarita, I'm curious, do you have a uh, an obstacle, something that is in the way for you?
Yeah, my, what is on my way is actually very minor, so I have those minor complaints that can be addressed by the phone number, five nine one, six thousand. Um, I recently moved to the city and I have some extra time on my plate. So I would like to be more involved and see where I can make any contribution that I can.
I love that, but I do want to say that minor issues are still valid. At the end of the day, they are your issues, so.
Sure. For instance, I, uh, I go to my uh, neighborhood association meetings. And um, for me, and what I see in my neighborhood is I play tennis and I like tennis. And I see that there are the uh, public courts that are in severe disregard. And so I was trying to figure out, you know, obviously, this is a minor issue, okay? So um, uh, what is a way to get them um, to get attention? Because I know that uh, the United States Tennis Association has a plan to uh, come forward with money to resurface the courts, because you know COVID and community and youth involvement in some activity. And it's always a good thing, and there might be senior or people who know the game and they can activate a group of folks to come down and play, something like that.
Oh no, I'm right there with you. My partner and I, we are uh, people who enjoy the tennis playing as well. And there are some awful courts out there, so, so, okay, so great, we have a clear objective.
For instance, you have to know who owns the courts, who is in charge already to do the repair. Who can come forward, where this money would, might come, who might be interested in coming to the courts in case they're better, you know, all those kind of things.
Okay, so clear uh, obstacle. The obstacle is that the courts are problematic and you enjoy playing tennis. So, your objective is what then? What do you want to do?
Um, yeah, I would like to know who is in charge, who can, for instance, during COVID, many public court were locked. Because to avoid uh, uh, people getting together, but obviously tennis is a sport that allows uh, quite a physical distance. So that would, I thought that was counterproductive, but you know, ordinance are ordinance and um, so not everybody thinks too, then all the different facets of uh, things.
So, so if, for example.
There are many layers, you know, so there is a problem, but there are many layers, many uh, diffi- different um, organization and uh, uh, agency come uh, together for a single little issue.
Absolutely, absolutely. And now, so if you were to whittle that down to a simple phrase, what is it that in the simplest term, what do you want to do?
I want to play tennis on a public court that is in a good shape.
I love it, I love it.
Know, and there, and know that there is a email address or a phone number that I can call, um, you know.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. So, okay, great. So you want to play tennis. I love that. Now, if you were to say, looking at a beginning, middle and end, what are three points you would want to hit? If you were to deliver this two-minute speech? What would be your three points? And it could be two, by the way, three is an arbitrary number, just because it's pretty.
Hmm, yeah, so, I know, first of all, I need to be informed uh, before the, giving the talk, okay? So I need to know exactly who uh, is uh, who the tennis, public tennis court are under, which jurisdiction they are under. Um, then I would like to know why they're not taken care of. And I suppose it's a matter of money. And um, if uh, uh, the person in charge, the group in charge knows that there are uh, grants opportunity to resurface them.
Okay, okay.
This will take, will uh, encourage people to come uh, around um, and play. And also, I would like to know if there are people in the community that are, could be coached. Um, and could coach, let's say, one hour a week for the youth in the neighborhood.
Okay, okay, I, I'm loving.
I'm gonna leave it to you.
So, okay, I, I'm gonna ch- share with you what I've just taken from what you just said. So, okay, so it seems like you want to be able to play tennis. So, the things you're gonna make sure that you touch are um, who is in charge, right? Knowing who is in charge. From there, then you have why are they not doing anything about this problem, right? Then it seems like you went to informing people about resources, potentially directing them to grants, or, or opportunities where they could get help. And then you have the option of also, I mean, I think this last thing, community involvement, something like finding somebody who'd be willing to donate to um, and I don't know if you're doing, you're thinking of this as a volunteer thing, or if it's a paid position. Um, but it seems like it's community-oriented, which I think that's a, it's always a good winning ticket. So, if that's the case, if those are your points, I know you have research to do and homework, absolutely. But I want you to just throw yourself in, if I were to put you on a timer for two minutes. I would love to see how you would, based on those points, attempt giving this two-minute speech. You want to try that?
So, uh, it would, it's kind of personal.
Okay.
I would say tennis is a beautiful sport, uh, it takes people outdoors, it makes people meet each other. And there are many beautiful tennis uh, public courts available on, in the city. And unfortunately, I find out that they are in disrepair. Um, uh, what would be, what is, I know the United USDA has grants to match um, uh, the issue. And so, which, why is this not be taken advantage before? And what can we do in order to, you know, to do something about it?
Right, now look at that, I'm gonna tell you right now, you did that at a whopping um, third, fourth, sorry. Thirty, no, thirty-nine seconds. And honestly, that was, seriously, yeah, exactly. I think you have a really good starting place, even if that, as it is, that was a really good starting place. If anything, I would advise maybe um, share a little bit more about your investment in this. And because I, you know, it's very easy for us, and I don't know if anybody else feels this way, but I find that a lot of times what happens is that we um, we, we forget how much of our, of, how much bringing ourselves to something actually makes that thing really developing, growing to something beyond us. I think it'd be great if you shared something personal with that too, if, what got you into tennis, tennis maybe. Um, or why you think tennis is valuable in neighborhoods and communities. So I'd say you could share a little more personal stuff, but for the most part, I think you have a good base. And I think you know all the things you need to do now, which is look into more, what are those grant options you can throw at them as examples? And also knowing who are these people who even own these properties, are running, are supposed to be in charge of at least. So yeah, I think keep playing, I think you're in a good place, just keep adding all those little extra details that make it more you. Does that make sense? Great, thank you, thank you, thank you. Absolutely. Uh, hey, Grant. You look like you're burning to say something.
I guess I'm gonna mute myself.
Yes, hi there, hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm, I'm okay, you know, we're alive, we're well, moving one foot is in front of the other.
Yeah, I hear you.
Right, so I'm curious, um, if you were to pinpoint an obstacle that would be something you'd want to bring to city council, what would that be?
Hmm, well, to be honest with you, I don't have um, something specific right now, that's like, sort of like, top of mind. But I would say something I, would maybe my top three would be um, just becoming, doing what I, what I can personally to be more involved in um, sort of the racial equality movement that was happening over the summer. Um, and so there are branches of that to like, I mean, that's something you need to say to some city council, obviously, but um, you know, once I did my homework and found out the best way to become involved. What are the most effective ways for me to help those people that need that help? Is it, you know, getting involved with, you know, maybe with, with Josh who spoke earlier, is it getting involved with um, more affordable housing, is it um, you know, reading through those, those council minutes about uh, the, all those budget numbers with, you know, defunding the police or reducing budgets and that sort of thing, so. It's sort of, my mind sort of scrambled a little bit on, on where to best place my resources, I guess, right now.
No, and that's absolutely fair, that's fair, but, so, okay, so at the very least though, it seems like you do have an interest in that conversation. And what is it about that conversation even that is of interest to you?
Well, it's a mix of um, of multiple things. It was, you know, just becoming more educated on, on, on the subject of, you know, I'm a white kid, grew up in the suburbs. So obviously, a lot of these things didn't affect me growing up, and then um, George Floyd hit everyone like really hard, um, and that was really eye-opening to me. Um, one of my friends was a reporter, who was uh, tackled to the ground by six cops for doing his job. Um, and so that brought credence to me because, and then he, he was arrested and cuffed and everything. And so I feared for his safety, so then that made it personal to me um, for the first time, so I had like a zero, 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 point, zero, zero, zero percent, like modicum of understanding of what people people on, people go through. So that's really what inspired me to go down near to the protests and uh, become involved in that, in that sort of arena, at least in an, an entry level, I guess.
So yeah, yeah, seriously, and, and you, we are all in the place where we are, all of us, wherever that is, right? Um, but in the place where you are right now, what, what would be uh, something you could imagine you'd want city council to do about this? And I know I'm totally just throwing you off the deep end, you know?
No, it's fine, no, um. I think, you know, there's the real, there's the realistic things, and then there's like the, the far-reaching things. And someone mentioned the, and this is actually something through just becoming better informed on something I already knew was that the, the union contract with the police officers comes up in, in the spring. And so become educating on that and perhaps, you know, presenting press um, maybe some, some proposals that they haven't thought of. Um, you know, that's a, you know, those contracts I know are tricky between multiple parties and that sort of thing, but something that, just come up with a few different solutions that are more equitable, that make people walking the streets feel safer. Um, and feel, you know, that they aren't gonna be, you know, harmed for no undue reason. Or, or people that are, you know, protesting lawfully, that are gonna be harmed for no due reason, whether they're citizens, you know, taking part in a, part in a march or journalists covering the march, or frankly, innocent bystanders or business owners, you know, that's, that's sort of thing too, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, to me, what it's sounding like is that you, what, at least right now, it seems like it reads like you are interested in more protection. That's how it's almost, that's what I'm hearing, at least protections. What are those protections? And now, obviously, I know you still have a lot of work to do as far as identifying the specifics of it all, but that's what I'm hearing. Um, now, I think all that stuff you said, I mean, I wrote down just a few things. You wrote, you said, um, you know, a white kid growing up in the suburbs. Um, and suddenly having this eye-opening experience, the George Floyd situation and watching also your friend. And it become really close to you and personal. Stories like that, I think that is equally valid. I feel like a lot of times, you know, people that go to these um, and they get up for their two minutes and they think all they need to do is spill a bunch of facts. The reality is that facts are facts, and half the time, they already know the facts, right? Uh, facts are compelling and you can use them, because they're a fact, yes. But also, personal connection and being able to just say that you, that experience was eye-opening for you, I think that's just as valid. So I'd say whenever you do put your pieces together, um, I think you have a really good starting place already. Thank you for sharing.
Sure, no problem.
Hey, Keith. What you doing over there?
Uh, yeah, yeah, you picking on the introvert.
Oh, I know, thank you for playing, I appreciate it, I do. So, so I'm curious, Keith, if you were to throw out a potential obstacle that you want to um, go into city council with, what would that be?
So, it's interesting that you like to focus on the obstacle before the objective, because my brain works the opposite. Where I like to think about the obstacle, or, yeah, the objective, and then think about the obstacles. But, a- and humor me on this, because I had a, a event today at work that I'm applying here. And I don't want to get too technical, but I, I, I believe that the way that the, the city of Cincinnati and all really Ohio municipalities collect revenue is a major problem. And that prevents us from funding projects and services the way that I think we should and have that local control. And so I came up with an objective that I want city of Cincinnati to lead an effort and other cities hopefully will follow. That basically flips on its head. and other cities hopefully will follow, that basically flips on its head how we, how we collect revenue at the municipal level to allow us to rethink how we fund these services and these projects and initiatives. It, it gets pretty technical because I, I'll, I'll disclose, I am a CPA and I, I kind of work in the state and local tax area. But I, I think it really is something that, that the city could take an initiative to be a leader in.
And, and I love this, this is already a really good setup for all of this. Now, you know, and I totally get what you're saying about like, we do. What happens is that we subconsciously immediately start thinking about problem solving. That's just what we do as humans. We start trying to solve the problem. But the thing is, we don't have to put oftentimes our attention too much on the problem because we're so focused on the objective. But the reason why I always say, look at your objective first is because you want to clearly and specifically define what it is. Because for example, if I were to say an objective, my, my obstacle in Cincinnati is, oh, you know, existing while black is hard. And that's totally true and valid, but that's so broad. Like, so what I'm getting at here is specifying it, bringing it down to the fine point. What is Darnell trying to actually say is the obstacle? Because that is very broad and very big. So I'm getting more so Keith in terms of getting specific about what the obstacle is, bringing it down to a fine point. Uh, let's see. Keith, could an obstacle be that current revenue streams limit? How much can be funded? Ooh, that's juicy. And that would be a very clear obstacle.
Yeah, I think that's actually kind of the heart of, of what I'm thinking is, is that as the state is providing less money to the city, it, the, the amount of revenue we are receiving is a, is certainly a problem. It limits us.
Yeah, yeah. So now, okay, and if this is what I heard that I thought sounded like the objective, we need to lead an effort to rethink how we collect revenue.
I think that's, that's correct. And unfortunately, we're limited by the Ohio constitution. And so it really requires a organization with pull to work with Columbus to, to make these changes. And, and, and I think, you know, Cincinnati, obviously, I'm not going to go to Cleveland or Columbus to do that, you know?
So, okay, so now, so we have the objective. What would be, if you had to throw out the points that you know you want to hit, what would be those points?
Well, I think I, as you talked about forming an outline with a beginning, middle and end and, and making it personal, I, I would, I would talk about the problem, the history of how our system is really stuck in a nineteen fifty's world of, of revenue collection. And I would also tell that I've been doing this since I was nineteen years old. And when I was a bright eyed, kind of dumb nineteen year old, I immediately said, this doesn't make sense, why are we doing it this way? And now, all these years later, I think I can add perspective on, you know, hey, not only do I recognize there's a problem, here's maybe some potential solutions and, you know, lay out what we need to do, what are those action steps? And, you know, that's where it gets a little bit messy because, you know, I think that requires a lot of work together, coalitions and, and, and thought focus groups in order to make progress on that. I have no idea really what those action steps are. I just know that it's really a bunch of probably boring people coming together and talking about ideas that maybe not a lot of people want to talk about.
Yeah, but, but I mean, it, it sounds like it's, I mean, but it's, at the end of the day, it's still important. So there, it's totally valid. Now, with this history, is yours about the history, for example, of what was and then here we are now? Is that the idea? Or are you saying?
Or that we've really never made any progress? We're kind of still where we have always been and that's a problem.
Okay, great, 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 great. So under that history, let's say, because first of all, I'm going to say right here, the fact that you already have this idea of a narrative of a history of here's where we were, here's where we are now, here's the problem, right? I think that's the two minutes because two minutes goes by a lot faster than we think it does. And at the same time, two minutes can last forever. So, but I would, I mean, my suggestion would be to play with that, the history side. So now, can I, can I throw you in the hot seat? Do you want to give a stab at what you, what you would on today without the full understanding of details, maybe that you would want to get together? But just with where you are right now, could you share two minutes?
Sure.
All right. Whenever you're ready.
And actually try to give a two minute talk on this?
Yes. Whenever you're ready.
Um, all right. I, I would say that I, I believe we have a fundamental issue with how our local government can function correctly. And that's based in how we think about collecting revenue and therefore how we spend. And I've been thinking about this, been, been working in this area since I was an intern at one of the accounting firms and talked to a lot of people about what really is, you know, a fundamental problem with the way Ohio dictates how our Ohio municipalities can operate and the limits that are put on them. And I think that Cincinnati could lead an effort through council, through committees, to form a proposal that we bring to Columbus, maybe through our state representatives to undo, basically turn on its, turn, you know, upside down what the constitution currently says about the power to tax and raise revenue. And I believe by doing that, we will have more flexibility and more autonomy at the local level to make the decisions that are, that are right for the city, including potentially having, you know, citizen groups actually having more of an input in a more transparent budget process. I might also add that, you know, there are very, obviously, all taxes are unpopular. You know, income taxes, property taxes definitely get a lot of negative publicity. And I think we have to address those issues also and, and, and allow our citizens to have more of an understanding, make it more transparent. So, so people understand how the amount of tax that they're paying actually goes towards the services that they provide. I think it, it, I mean, and that may be a separate issue, by the way, of, you know, really, people, no, no one likes taxes, but everybody wants the services. But at the end of the day, I think that the city of Cincinnati.
At time.
And all I was going to add there was that in the end of the day, I think what we will have our greater possibilities in, in providing more effective services. And that's, that's really kind of the end of it is just simply, we will be in a better place.
All right, great, you know, great. I, so first of all, I, I'm, I'm just going to throw back some things that I heard. I thought you did a great job of setting up the problem. You made it very clear from the very beginning, here is the history of this and why it's problematic. So I thought that was fantastic. Then you went into, I don't know, I called it like the idea of hope when you gave an example of what it could be like. And that idea of propose, the proposal to Columbus, I thought setting up, first of all, one thing that's always going to be good, give, give options, show that you've done the homework, that you have options. And if you have options, they can't not hear that. It may not work for various other reasons, but you came prepared with options. And then you went into the future autonomy, the ownership on a local level. I thought that was really, really, really good. And then even when, you know, when you got to the end and you started adding the whole transparency with the budget, I thought one of the things that really I would suggest even bringing up sooner or bringing it more as a point to drive home is the idea of educating citizens. At making people, making, figuring out ways that we can get people involved and aware. I think that is always going to be a good thing because everybody benefits when everybody's aware. So I thought overall, that was honestly for a throw you right in the middle of the ring moment, I thought you did well. If anything, I think, you know, figure out like, how do you, how do you bring it back to a conclusion and make your point come home? That would be the one thing I would say, really make that point come home. Because you started going there, but the timer ran out on you. So you would have possibly missed your chance to really get that last little button on there.
You're absolutely right, the two minutes goes very, very fast, very fast.
Yeah, absolutely. Because I mean, hey, if we're up to most of us, I'm sure we'd be up there proclaiming to the entire world what our issues are. But no, but really, I thought you did a really good job. So now, I want to open it up to any questions you all might have. Well, first of all, everybody give a hand for all the people who volunteered or who I chose. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. You're all fantastic. And seriously, I think all of the points you brought up are valid and great. So I'm curious, if anybody has any questions about anything, whether it's as far as crafting and putting together text or delivery or any of that stuff, or even about me, just any questions you might have. And not having questions is okay, too.
Darnell, can you think of any particularly memorable public comments that you've seen in Cincinnati City Council? While people are thinking of, can you think of any, like, the most memorable public comments that you've seen in Cincinnati City Council?
Oh. Something that, I think something that really stands out to me more than anything. A dear friend of mine, she went up and she gave her two minutes. And one of the things she did is she absolutely called them out for clearly not paying attention. She was unapologetic about it. And I, you know, and while, you know, some people may think that that's kind of a, I don't know, an aggressive and maybe not useful tactic. I think that you look at the long history of change, whether it's through city council or if it's on a larger scale or even on a small, smaller scale. We, when we want an objective, we have to keep trying different tactics until we get to the one that works. And sometimes after so many people have gone up and spoken that there's one person who has to come in and wake people up again. And what she did is she woke them up because they could not, not listen to her. And one of the things she did was she started it by saying, thank you, thank you. And she just kept saying it. I think she said it like four times and then finally started saying what she had to say. Because there was something about, I think that phrase just shook them. It got them together and they started listening. It, it, it was unexpected. And I think sometimes you do have to find out what is the unexpected thing you can say that's going to change the energy in the room ultimately. Because I think about, again, I keep going back to auditions, watching person after person after person. I think anybody can feel drained after a while. It, it, it's reasonable to feel drained. But the reality is that that's your job when you're on that council. And if, if you're tired, but guess what? The people who are in that line, the top, they're tired too, and that's why they're there. So I say, use your time. And if you need to use your time saying, thank you, then use it.
I love that. I remember, I think I remember that speaker and you're right, it was awesome. I just wanted to share that one of my favorites was when one of Josh Spring's colleagues went up and she played a YouTube video of the Charlie and the Chocolate Factory song, I Want It Now, for the full two minutes. It was incredibly awkward.
That was the best day.
It was so, it was so effective, though. Because she was clearly just owning the time and everyone had to sit there and listen to it. And she was calling them selfish. Okay, there are a couple of questions in the chat. Sarah says, how do you overcome fear of public speaking to even get to this point?
Oh, well, you know, what I always say is the biggest thing we fear in public speaking is ourselves. It's, it's scary. It is scary to make yourself that vulnerable, you know? But I always have to bring my mind back. Again, it's why I talked about, this is going back to the point with you, Keith, is why the obstacle is so important to say, to put in words and in a phrase that is something you can really come back to. Because that's, that's the thing that keeps you driving, that's the thing. And I know that still doesn't necessarily always help in getting past those nerves. But I find that that's a good way to do it. Also, or rather remembering that obstacle. I also think that breathing exercise and trusting that your voice deserves to be heard. I think it's no different than voting, how that, your one vote could topple the decision. You never know. And trust that your, your presence up there could be the one, for whatever reason. I always think of all the, you know, why people get jobs, for example? Why people suddenly change the energy in a room to where people listen? Those people, I think it has to do with intention. If that intention is so clear and genuine, I think it's going to make itself apparent. Now, even I'd say on another level, there's always the potential that you could remind them of somebody that they know, something personal. You never know what your presence can do. And I think that's what I have to remind myself of always is that you never know, you never know what you could bring to that room. You just don't know until you get up there and do it. And I, I promise you that the nerves start to go away. They really start to go away once you start speaking. It just, it's, it's, I think most of us fear that initial thing. It's kind of like, I think I relate this to a body of water. Like, you know, there are the people who dip their toe in to check the temperature and there are people who just jump in, right? I'm totally a toe dipper, I'll be honest, I am. Yet at the same time, I, 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 I guess what's so great about that is that once you do, you know what it's like. And it's not until you do dip your toe that you can even have an idea. So I say, the best way to get over that fear, I know this sounds probably not terribly helpful, but the best way to get over that fear is to do it. Give yourself one time, just go, give it a shot. It may be a mess and guess what? It's okay still, you got your voice heard. That'll be my answer to that.
Nice. I like this next question because it's so practical and it's something that I keep thinking, I wish we were in council chambers. I wish we could all be there together because then we could show the just practical steps that you have to take to, to speak. So the question is, do you just show up and get in to speak or do you have to register ahead of time? Do you know?
Show up.
Yeah. So you show up and you fill out this card, you go to the clerk who's sitting on the side of kind of the council like platform. And he gives you a speaker's card and you fill it out with your name and your signature. And I don't know if it's like your phone number, your address, like something. And the, like a one word or two words about what your topic is. And now that it's virtual, you can sign up to speak online via Zoom. And I think that those signups close like the day before usually. So make sure you plan ahead if you want to speak by Zoom. Sorry, I just answered your question.
Oh, no, no, you're delegate.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice, we have eight minutes if you have questions. Nope. What are some good public speaking meetups, classes, et cetera?
Hmm. Let's see, I know that a dear friend of mine, Tori Wiggins, she has a company she's created where I know that's something she works with people on directly. Other than that, I mean, through a lot of the different, like, I know you can, it's such a tricky thing because I do find that there, these days, I remember, I remember when I was in my twenties, you could find classes like that everywhere. But not a lot of people are doing it because most people end up going to, you know, universities to do it and stuff. So it's not, oh my goodness, there's a baby, easily distracted, there we go. So I completely forgot what I was talking about now.
Sorry, you're talking about classes.
But yeah, I would look for, just search the name Tori Wiggins and I, you'll, I cannot remember the name. I'm going to see if I could really quickly find the name of her company. Give me one second, I am close. Okay, now I'm failing, but I will post her website in the chat and you could contact her directly, but she's great for that. All right. Tell her Darnell sent you to.
Nice, any more questions, guys? Can you give some do's and don'ts for body language?
Ah, body language is always a thing. I, you know, a lot of us, we hold our attention, not just in our shoulders, but oftentimes it's hands. Watch a person while they're public speaking, just, it's, it's the most fascinating thing. And look at their hands. Everything they're thinking is always in the hands. So what I always suggest more than anything is just try to remain open. Some basics I always think about, avoid anything where you're like crossing your arms, anything like that, and don't put your hands in your pockets or even behind your back. I'm always of the belief that when you put your hands in your pockets, I'm always of the belief that when you put your hands in your pocket behind your back, I feel like it's like you're hiding something or holding back in some way, it's no different than when you do it in the front as well, like the people who will stand and they'll kind of do this, that is like a very much, I am closed off and protected, and you cannot cross this threshold. So, open your hands, open your palms, let them, so there are, uh, I'm very fascinated with, so um my personal technique that I follow as a performer is uh Michael Chekhov's technique. And everything is about is about imagination, and one of the things he talks about are the, it's the trinity of psychology. And in the trinity of psychology, you have people who lead thinking here from the head, you have lead people who lead thinking from the heart. And you have people who lead thinking from the the pelvis, the groin, and those relate to what they call thinking, feeling, and willing. And with feeling, when you are, think about whenever you are at your most happy. One of the things I want you to pay attention to is your hands, they're open usually, when you're happy, it's best and that's that's what I'm getting at ultimately, is being aware of holding, thinking open, thinking up, thinking out and radiating through. Um so that's that's body language stuff that I particularly connect to.
Great. Anything else, any last final questions for Darnell? You guys, I just wanted to point out my Zoom background um and tell you that we have four custom designed Zoom backgrounds by Lindsay Nels, who's on this call. Um and if you want to donate to our end of year campaign, then we'll send you all of them, there's a link. Um I just had to get that plug in before we leave. Any final final questions for Darnell before we wrap it up, it's just about nine o'clock. No, okay, thank you so much, Darnell, can we give him a round of applause too?
Thank you, Darnell.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thanks, Hugo.
Good night. Thank you very much, everyone, have a great night.
Like, it's you.
It's you and me.
Yeah, why are we under the sea?
Are we under the sea, that's our background. It's our background.
Oh my gosh.
What?
I'm not leaving, this is the best part of the meeting. Why are we under the sea? Great job, thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming. Take care.
Hi, Hugo.
Good night, Ellie.
Hi, Hugo.